Oh, good. Okay, good. You see my big uncle out there waddling around? I think he was up there. Oh, there's Laura.
Every time I move it does that.
It's still locked open.
Of course.
Making that's.
Do you do you want to talk to her?
I probably moved less. I have it here.
Getting better now I'm not here. Oh, yes. Thank you. Thank you for the honor.
Oh, great. Lauren, settle in for a second. All right, it is five thirty. Let's call this meeting order. Please rise for the pledge. The pledge is over here.
Pledge of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Also going to read our mission statement and partnerships with the communities. The mission of the Delawareland Homes School District is to educate individuals in an environment of trust and respect so they become self-directed, responsible lifelong. Roll call. All board members are present, while Superintendent Hunstead, we have our special ed director, Mary Ann Martin, with us as well tonight, and Mrs. Wally and Tracy Tolleson and Bert Belka. So, welcome all. Uh, do you want any changes to the agenda?
Um, we do not. The only thing is, I want to see, I'm sure you'll check mine. I'm just gonna have a little bit. We're gonna talk about the PCFP and Rebel Kids here.
Okay.
During my report.
Okay, sounds wonderful. So, with a motion to approve the agenda. So, motion by Nicole. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Brittany. Although, if you ever say hi.
Hi.
Uh, pause. Motion carries. Uh, if public comments, rebel recognition, I don't see any public comments on there. Uh, any rebel recognition?
Teacher appreciation week.
Yes.
And all what they do.
Awesome. Yes.
And to the first grade teachers who brought Brazilian children to bowling today. That was fun. But they managed.
Did they feel appreciated that way?
I saw a million hugs.
Oh.
And hanging. So, I I feel like the kids appreciate their teachers. I don't know if they reciprocated that feeling, you know, that they had to lift a new child. The love was there.
That's wonderful. Love is measured a lot of different ways.
But they did a great job.
Anything else?
Second graders had their music program last week. So, it was fun to see them in the new space. And I thought Amber's and some. And Kathy Joxley was on May the fourth, so it was Star Wars.
Cool, huh?
They incorporated that, so I thought that was really great. Um, nope. That was fun.
Um, just on the music note, my kid brought home, like, like a little updated worksheet thing. Like, this is what we've been doing. And it had a QR code on it and you could scan it. And she had taken, I think, Mrs. Jansen had taken videos of all the kids singing and playing instruments. So, when you scanned it, you got your kids' class and got to watch a cool little video of that. So, I thought that was awesome and cool to incorporate, like, technology and something different, but also connecting with family itself. Super cool.
The high school had their concert last week, choir concert. It was fantastic. Um, did you, were you at the first, the first one? Did the lights work? Because the lights didn't work for the second one. Someone hit a button. Mr. Linderson was like, oh, shoot. Okay, he's like, I spent two hours on this and technology. But he's learning.
They changed the the light colors for each of the songs, basically. And I thought they did a remarkable job and had the kids surrounded us. And we just happened to be sitting by the nine graders, which is where my kid is. And that was fantastic.
Awesome. So, we were the second concert and then something happened. It was just like a blue light. The second concert. But the kids singing was phenomenal and it was, it's always a good, it's always a good concert, so. Very nice.
When we walked in there, did they have whole lights on or the host lights on? Yeah.
Yeah.
So, you can actually see now. It noticeable this.
He pointed it out to all the people, like, all the updates and appreciative.
Yep, sound is new and then, yeah, it's, uh, it's, it was much needed, no question.
Absolutely. And, uh.
Can we have it tonight, too, the concert?
Band concert tonight, yeah, yeah. So, wonderful things, lots of things going on. And everybody can drive by the softball field. The new scoreboard is up. Looks nice.
And the portable sound systems out there, too. We have that working the way it's supposed to.
Now, is that gonna go over to the football field for?
Uh, that one is not made for that kind of facility. So, we have a different one coming for that.
Oh, awesome. All right. Lots of fun stuff happening, so good deal. All right, report six point one. Kimberly Wally, you are up.
Promise this is not going to be twenty minutes alone. Maybe it looks like you're right here.
Get a full lesson planned.
Just to. Thank you so much. And then.
Yeah.
Well, there you go. Thank you. So, I just thought I'd start out by thanking you for inviting me to come and share a little bit about wellness. The committee members are listed there, our current ones. And a couple of the comments that I'd like to give a shout out to are our student, two of our student representatives were just at state speech, uh, the last weekend in April. So, that will be Neeraan Hajamkuri. She's a junior student rep. And Nora Jones also is. So, I just have us listed alphabetically there. So, for admin, we have Brittany Jean and Tracy Tolleson, which is great. Uh, Shannon Noack is just a really great addition to the school, I believe, and to wellness. So, just really thankful for the ideas that she has. Christine Bronson is going to be taking over as chair going forward for twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. She's going to do a fabulous job. So, thankful that she has agreed to do that. And we're always grateful for our ship members who help us out because they always say that we're such a great school because we're willing to try things. It's like, there's a little pressure behind that as well, I think, but I appreciate their help. So, number two on this just says that what our school focus has been. You know, uh, currently, we work with the items listed below. In September, it's the International Up to School Day. That, uh, last year since Jane Newbauer started helping with Karen Nikorski through the dental opportunity, that's been a focus of ours. March Madness for employees has been a focus. The DGF Healthy Elementary Snack Program. And I have here that it's in its eighth year, the program. I believe it's actually the ninth year. In nineteen, uh, twenty nineteen and twenty twenty is when we added the family cap, which we thought would maybe help. Who knows? The grab and go breakfast, I believe, was started the next year, so that would be the seventh to the eighth year. And then now this year, which I'm sure Shannon Noack, uh, reported on last month, is the leftover meals that the district is starting, which is fabulous for needy families. So, our yearly action plan, ship helps with that. And the item start are what we just focus on. The staff wellness support, maintaining a full committee, annual public updates, which this is one, and also the, the healthy snack parent letter that goes out. The anti vaping program really was a passion of our student representatives in twenty nineteen. There were two students who came on as sophomores and then they stayed on the committee through their senior year. Because of COVID, they couldn't see any of that come to fruition. They really wanted to be the ones to, like, uh, support the middle schoolers making better choices. But it's been passed on well, I think. In twenty twenty-one, the current three reps that we have really brought forward to the committee about student well-being. You know, and part of that was because of COVID. Things weren't going so well for them at home and being isolated. And so, our focus has changed a little bit over the course of the years that I think at first wellness was really about the staff members. And now that's really just a tiny part of it as we try to strive to help the students, especially with now the dental health promotion on as well. So, ship has been helpful to us since two thousand eleven. That's in, in my data. And right now, uh, Karen and others are really helping Shannon connect with local farmers. She's doing a fabulous job of that on her own and also just prepping her for when the annual reviews will help, will be starting, like the triennial, triennial assessment. The freezer for leftover meals as she's trying to decide where's best to put that and how to make kids aware that they can just discreetly go in and get those meals. And then sources of strength, which is what I'll probably talk about a little bit the most. Karen brought that to us in the winter of twenty twenty-three. And then she brought, just last winter, and then she brought that up again at our last meeting in April. So, I'll talk about that a little bit. So, in number six, our wellness policy, as you know, is on the school website. It was adopted in twenty twelve and it was revised just last May in twenty twenty-two. The, uh, what you have in attachments, the number two, this is the healthy parent snack letter or the healthy snack parent letter that went out just in the fall. And we were kind of scrambling in the fall. Eric was taking over for us and he did the best he could going forward to try to prepare parents as to what the cost might be and what the rotation might be. But if should we keep this program, we hope to go forward with a little more clarity. Uh, let's see. That after that letter. Uh, so, number three, as you can see, that's our school wellness policy action plan. And that's what Karen helps us work toward every year. And that's where the focus has kind of been, less about staff, as I said, and more about the kids in the anti vaping and the student well-being and the dental program, which we're hoping. I mean, I know that in the fall, there are plans for K four. And I think that Jane would even like to expand those dental opportunities to middle school, if possible. So, I think she's waiting to see how things will go in the fall. And she's been working with Brittany Jean in waiting, you know, the other site. So, what I'll finish with, and then if you have any questions, I'll try to, uh, try to answer is that the, the last three things that I have attached, the four, five, and six are all about this program called Sources of Strength. And it's something that Karen brought to the, uh, to the wellness committee in the fall. And quite honestly, I thought, I'm so tired of new initiatives. And the people who are willing to be advisors are stretched so thin already that a lot of us on the wellness committee just kind of put it to the back burner. And she kept bringing it up, you know? And so, what it basically is, it ends up being, it says, uh, a strength-based approach to suicide prevention. And so, the reason why it keeps coming back up is, of course, as parents and educators, you know, Fergus Falls is just a little too close. West Fargo was just a little too close. So, perhaps we do need to have, you know, maybe just, I need to talk about work committees, but some people who might be interested to see if it would work. So, and the reason why I'm really bringing it to you is that in April, then Karen brought these next two pieces to us. So, number five is what our twenty nineteen data was. And this is a combination of fifth, eighth, ninth, and eleventh graders. So, I'm going to get a little emotional here because I can't believe the numbers decreased. So, in twenty nineteen, I just start, start some things about how the kids feel about us as adults. And it's pretty startling. And where their educational engagement is, if they feel that we care and a positive identity. So, then the last page is where we are most recently in twenty twenty-two. And unfortunately, some of those numbers went down where we don't have space for those numbers to go down. So, I guess, um, if I could leave you with something, it would be, please find money for the staff snack program, but also, um, maybe encourage the admin as far as the principals to maybe seek out some people who are willing to work with the sources of strength. So, my latest communication with Kent, Katie, and Joel was early May, right after our last meeting in April. And I just said, you know, here's the data, here's what Karen is willing to bring to the program. It will be funded by ship, things like that. We just need to find people who are willing to maybe catch those kids on the fringe. And as I understand it, the idea is that you mix all groups, not necessarily just the athletes, you know? So, it's the athletes, it's the vapors, it's everybody. You're bringing everybody to the table with the sources of strength program. They would meet about twice a month. What we've talked about in April is that maybe it's something that through the Jason McCoy PCN funds could be tapped into and maybe worked with. I know that Karen plus the, uh, the three principals and our student council reps, both in the middle school and the high school, already had one meeting. Just what do you think? Nothing's been decided as to whether we're going to go forward or not. But as I said, the data, the data is pretty startling and we just need better news for our kids.
So.
That's where they are.
Yeah. Uh, the source of strength is, um, does Karen have any other schools, communities that have used it, have had success with it? Was it a bunch of curriculum? Is it pretty much get together and visit about these key thing? I mean, I have heard of it. I haven't.
I know I haven't really, I don't know anything about it specifically. I think Morehead is working with it.
Yeah.
But just starting, same thing.
Yeah, I think it's a curriculum that a group of students do, like, it's purposeful. It's not just like sit and visit.
Yeah.
Yeah, I can ask our, our leadership group. I think it's a leadership group who does it, or that's what it's titled. And they run the sources of strength for us.
And so, what Karen needs is she needs some people who are willing to be trained. And so, that's those adults. And so, we're gonna start first. Yeah.
I've been trained in that.
I think that's what it is.
And then those people would be willing to lead, uh, either monthly. I think we could start out monthly or we could start out with twice a month.
Is it a meeting center?
Well, they worked in Holly, um, at the school through the school board office. So, we used a lot of these things in the Holly Hype Group, which is similar to our Rise Club.
Sure.
Um, and so, that was, that, these were the purposeful things that we used to drive our committees through hype. So, I see this as a perfect spot for the Rise Club because it is all inclusive and it tries to get kids from all different areas. And it's already a glimpse that it's tapped and, and it has a lot of the same focus because you're trying to promote those positive choices and make, but it's feel like they are important.
I'd say the one group that we have to, I mean, there are, there are a certain percentage of kids who are not involved in anything.
Right.
And not really interested in being involved in anything. And I think those are the ones we have to try to pull in and realize that you don't have to be intimidated in this other, this group of the doers. You know, you can be a doer as well. It could be a different doer.
Yeah, you think about us, and this is the middle school. Where does it start to become a junior high, right?
Right.
So, fifth grade, we're having as elementary kids. Sixth grade, we're gonna try a little hybrid thing where it's, you know, the core stuff. But you start to lose connection with kids and kids start to lose connection with a staff member that's their home. You know what I mean?
Their base.
And their base and. I mean, let's face it, we have juniors and seniors that need a little home room time to connect with some adult to feel good and feel like they matter, right? And it just, it's easy to get lost in high school. It's easy to get lost. Seventh grade bell rings, you go to another place. Bell rings, you go to another place. Bell rings. And the day is over and you didn't get fulfilled because you didn't feel like you were a piece of anybody's puzzle. And it's, it's easy to get lost. And I think, I don't know, it's almost like we need to have, every day, you need to have one class, so bear with it. I mean, it's too much, I know. And it's like, okay, who's gonna do it? Well, every teacher needs to do it. Okay, how does every teacher do it? You, you just have to touch base with our kids because, um, as we've just learned, the local kid who's sad from Fergus Falls, it just, you just, I, I don't know, it's just threw me off.
Great. We had the same home room teacher from freshman year to senior year. I had Mr. Sunquist. He was a math teacher. He was not my math teacher, but he was a math teacher and.
And you went there for ten minutes or fifteen minutes?
Yeah, he just took initial attendance. They gave us our, any morning reports that we would have to have and off to the first class.
I mean, certainly some of this is, you know, social media related as well. And so, then it's a, it's an effort to get them off of that and doing this, you know? Because there's not much of the actual communication anymore.
Yeah.
Anyway, so this is just like a short flurb.
Sorry.
No, go ahead.
So, on this, for the more percentages where we have highlighted, one question is, maybe you can't tell. Is it higher to lower grades, lower and higher grades, vice versa, or is it just all blended together?
Good question. I can ask Karen if she has it, you know, if they can figure it out separately. Fifth, eighth, ninth, and eleventh.
Decentages down lower, way up here, then a senior higher, way down here.
It's a good question.
And that would be a helpful focal point of what's there between the two. So, we have the student survey. I have a copy. So, send me that email, Kit or, uh, Mike, can you remind me? I have that and it's got, I mean, it's that thick, but it's got all of our kids. And it's, yes.
Good, because this is a combination.
Yep, no, it's our kids and their responses to, I don't know, fifty, a hundred questions. I don't know, but it's, so you can see grade levels and you can see. Just curious, there's a difference from age groups. Yeah, I can't remember Brittany.
Do you know if this is the training people have to attend or do they come here and train?
They have to attend. That's what I thought. Because the really, the required, and it's just a thing like one adult who's going to report each age group.
Sure.
So, they were cool. Great. And then going forward, I'll work with, uh, Christine. I said that I would stay on the committee at least one full year and just help her with, you know, where resources are and things like that. So, thank you.
Just so you know, Karen always comes to me to make sure that if she's diagnosed.
Well, you know, we need to work together here, so it can be a fun group. It's not like every other Monday.
Shannon, I just want to tell you that this group is amazing.
Yeah, I was looking at this, um, that you're considering the mobile health clinic participation. What is that?
So, that is, so this person right here, Shane Newbauer, is a contact we have through Karen. And they come in and work with elementary students.
Like a, like a mobile dent, like where you could have the kids see.
That's what they're hoping.
Yeah, so we're, we're gonna do it next fall. We met with them already. They were at the parent teacher. Where were they at? Parent teacher, they brought the vehicle over?
I think so, but actually, uh, Brittany, before I left, I saw Brittany had sent out an email. And I believe they're going to be there this week for kids to walk through. I think it might be tomorrow.
They had it at one of those night events and I'm sorry, I can't remember what event.
Maybe it was at the kindergarten one?
Well, that's what it was. They had it out on the sidewalk. They said, because Karen came and we met, she said we would have, they could make sure it was available that night. That's what it was.
So, Brittany just sent out an email to the teachers saying that I believe it's going to be there tomorrow. And so, um, teachers, if you have time, you can bring your classes out so they can just walk through it. And then it's going to be out there this fall.
Yeah, it's sometime this fall.
It is through Blue Cross or is it Family Health Care?
Well, she, she, yeah, she's a rep from Blue Cross Blue Shield, but.
So, it'll be the family health.
Yes, that's who we met with.
Why no Morehead uses it?
They do.
Fantastic response. We did it in Newland and they could loved it. They thought it was great. They all came on with two freshes.
What kind of?
So, I think it's going to be brochures. And so, when kids go through this week, whether it's tomorrow or later this week, they produce, hopefully, kids will get those brochures home to their families.
All right, thank you. You're welcome so much. Appreciate it. Six point two, special education report, Mary Ann.
Here, there you go. Sorry, Brooke. You don't have long.
This is what. Sorry.
Laura, you're doing the report.
I was hoping I could get it. Okay, so I just put a little bit of information together. Um, I usually share that students receiving special education services, birth to twenty-one. So, I checked it, it was May third and we had two hundred ninety-five. I checked it right before I left, before I was printing this off, right, two ninety-six. We have a couple new students, so added that. So, we're getting back up there a little bit. We'll have more kids probably move over the summer, but then we'll have kids move in in the fall as well. So, I think it's going to be interesting, um, to see where we're at, um, this coming fall. See where our numbers are. Special Olympics Track and Field in Morehead on May eighteenth. Um, if anybody can come, opening ceremony, national anthem is at ten thirty, closing ceremony, one fifteen.
You won't be sad if you go.
No, it's a wonderful event. It is. Last year, the last year, the first year was there for the national anthem. And it was really cool, like getting to see the kids with the, um, walk on the track and stuff. So, and this is the unified event. Yeah, I, I did have that and then I took that off. I shouldn't make last minute changes.
So, I think it makes it extra special.
Yep, and we do have a unified PE class and they're going with the kids, so. Extended school year, um, we have birth to three year round. We have birth to three, we have year round services and we get the Help Me Grow referral. So, Kristen Cadree, she's our early childhood special education teacher who does the birth to three. And so, she'll be working over the summer, um, then preschool, E S Y. Um, we have the services through community yet, but then we also hire our priest, one of our preschool teachers to do the special education services. And then we have school age E S Y and we have two teachers doing that. Um, I need seven paras. I've gotten five so far who said that they could, so I need a few more parents, so. But currently working on staffing for both preschool and school age E S Y. We have just about everybody, so just the paras. Um, staffing for next school year. We hired one elementary special education teacher. So far, we have hired two paras, one for DGF Elementary and one at the high school. Staff that we need to hire for next year still, twenty-three. I wrote that wrong. Twenty-three, twenty-four.
And that's all we need.
You need one high school special education teacher, uh, one speech language pathologist. Um, Betty Benzen, she is, um, at the middle school, high school. She is leaving us and so, that's where we need the speech pathologist. Um, as of right now, we have three openings for special ed paras at DGF Elementary and three paras for the middle school. And we do have two interviews tomorrow. So, but Eileen is gonna fight in one of them because one has.
Plus, yes, he does.
Plus the license, so we'll see how that goes. I did have a nice conversation with Eileen at the end of the day. She called me, told me, Mary Ann, she goes, we really need that person. I go.
Me too.
I played next to the sandbox and I said, we'll figure it out. I go, I'm good, so. Um, we really do work well together. These are just my monthly meetings. I think I've talked about this before. Um, there's MDE, Special Education Directors Forum, one time per month virtually. And it's really nice not having to go down to the city. It's virtually for about two and a half, three hours, depends on how much information. Region Board Directors Meeting, one time per month. You can either go to Lakes Country Service Co-op or we can do it virtually. I've only gone virtually like twice this year. It's so much easier to stay in my office. The only thing I find that when I stay in my office, I try to multitask. And that's not always good. Sometimes it's nice to get out of the building, so I don't multitask as much, but it's nice not to have to travel too, so. Um, at Wednesday afternoon, I'm going to be leaving for the Minnesota Administrators for Special Education, May's conference. It's their best practice conference in Brainerd. And, um, I was looking at the different sessions that I can go to and they just look wonderful and really looking forward to going. Um, they usually, obviously, they have updates about best practice, but, um, there's lawyers at the conferences. They're talking about legal updates, um, discipline for students who, um, IEPs, um, just a gamut of information, so it's really nice to be able to go to that. I didn't go to the fall conference, so joined to this, this one. Um, we did have, um, twenty-two, twenty-three MDE Indicator Data Flexion Record Review. That's what they call monitoring now. Um, we had one review for Child Find. Called the eleven Child Find, it'd be thirteen secondary transition goals and services. Um, one review, timely receipt of services. So, we had two of those, so that would be from the time that they qualify for services that we need that timeline within thirty school days that they have to receive their services. Um, C seven is part C forty-five day timeline. So, from the time that we get a referral and that's when it goes in. So, if we get one for Help Me Grow, the minute it goes into Help Me Grow, the clock starts ticking. You have forty-five calendar days to do those. So, it's just making sure that we hit those timelines. Um, so total monitoring areas were for this year. It was due April fifteenth. I had everything in. I haven't heard anything bad about that, but I mean, we were good with everything. So, the thing that they would need is maybe documentation from any of that paperwork to send in, so. And now, I'm just, tomorrow I have meetings with Marcus, working on getting all the grants submitted for next year. So, that's kind of what we're working on now too. Getting that done. Any questions for me? Anything? Thank you.
Thank you.
Six point three, Board Mini Reports, facilities and transportation.
Can we do that? Yeah. Okay, if I can remember. Uh, we met after the last board meeting. We had talked about the new Rebel Kids chair for the little ones, the three and four-year-olds, talking about space options, classrooms, facilities. Um, we also talked about transportation that. What is it called?
Negotiations.
Negotiations coming up soon. And I think Shannon had his first meeting after that, um, after our last meeting. And I think the only other thing we discussed was the garage going up this summer that we thought would be done earlier, but it didn't get done. So, getting bits for that and getting. That we thought would be done earlier, but it didn't get done. So getting bids for that and getting it up.
This lab was bored last, uh, last fall. We have all the wood laying over there. It just, long story short, couldn't get somewhere to build it, so. Joe's working to finalize that here, so it should be, get it up somewhere, because everything's sitting over there, so, you know, you want it. So, yeah, so we did talk about that. We were hoping to have it shelled out for the winter and it just didn't come to fruition, but. It'll be up soon and it'll be nice for Eileen as well.
No, I was just looking over here.
Six point four, Superintendent Report.
Um, summer board meetings, we can leave alone, correct, Micah?
Yes.
We can leave everything. Okay, I just wanted to make sure that that was good. I know we had discussion on that last board meeting. And I just want to make sure we're still good. Board work session, um, I think you guys have this, or maybe I just have it. I don't know, remember? Um, Brooke sent this out about a work session we talked about in June. So just, please, I'll just leave it out so it's a reminder. This one, I think some people did respond. Maybe everybody did, no, so maybe that's another turn. Nope, okay. Um, I just. And so we'll have Nicole. But it's just an important thing. We dislike, it's, it was nice to see from the wellness committee and their plan, right? Here's the, here's our items that we need to focus on, and that's exactly what we're trying to establish with the district leadership team and as a school board. And as administration is, okay, what are our priorities? What are our focuses? And then what's our timeline? Who's in charge? And when's that? Where are we gonna see evidence? And so this is a big thing, and uh, this Thursday, we meet with the district leadership team. Um, I've asked them to bring three to five priorities, and so it'll be fun to see what they bring. Um, my head is spinning myself, and so that day, Thursday morning, it's just to be to throw them at the wall, write them all down. And then start processing through that, discussing them. And then, and then following meetings to start having the board look at those, that list, create your own list. That's why I want this work session too. Um, and then it was time to vote, right? District leadership team can vote, board can vote, admin can vote. What do we got? You know, where are our priorities? So. A lot to count on that, but uh, also exciting. It's, it's uh, input and work, I guess. Especially, I'll just be selfish for the superintendent, so I get direction. So I know what I should be investing time and money in, supporting what you guys believe we should do and our distribution. Um, so early childhood, so one thing I didn't have on here is, is we talked about it, the facilities and transportation committees. That we're excited to get this started. We talked about Rebel Kids Care for four-year-olds. We're starting to talk about that preschool, what it looks like. Um, Tracy is ready to roll out the registration tomorrow morning at seven AM. You remember from last week, she presented, the last week, last board meeting. Uh, she made that presentation. We talked about the fees. I shared those fees out with you now too, so you can see that, you know, we talked about that, how that can work. So we can start the registration. We have a lot of early childhood people wondering, would we register, wouldn't we register, wouldn't we help? And so it's that time, we had a little delay because we wanted to make sure we had some discussion. Um, and that, so we're excited that that can roll out tomorrow morning.
I have a question. I think in the past, kids who have done talks have kind of had first dibs or a heads up on registration for school readiness. Are we still doing that?
Visiting with Roseanne, I met with her again today. Um, she was giving the students that are already enrolled, already notification of that this is forthcoming.
So they don't get to register early by?
Yeah, that it's kind of, we're just, because it's the new program.
It's a new program and we're running a little late here, like a lot of them are used to have already done it, or have already registered in April. We just need to get this thing going and see, okay, is this gonna explode? I mean, great, or can we manage it? And that's, I mean, it's new, right? And so we're, we're optimistic. We know that we're gonna serve more families as the goal and more kids preparing for what's next and. Yeah.
I had a couple of questions or worries from people who have said they're worried they're not gonna get a spot if they don't do the daycare. They were worried like priority would be.
No, if, if you want your kid to attend, they're gonna attend. They're gonna figure out how to attend. It's always been the one more, right?
In this, if we need to tweak that, we've kind of followed the same model with this that we did with Rebel Kids Care. It will, um, we've always said for Rebel Kids Care, if you enroll full-time, you kind of get priority. Here, if they enroll in early childhood and Rebel Kids Care, we're gonna kind of put them in a group, okay? So, yeah, so we can, I mean, we're gonna kind of, I, when I say prioritize, we're gonna put those over here. And then the other ones, if we have to have another room for just people who want just, just early childhood, that's fine. So you'll see that in there, that we've kind of tweaked what you guys.
Thank you.
Yeah, so this is a perfect segue. Brittany, thanks for asking that question. You can see that we're gonna, we have an empty, have full-time preschool teacher. Um, because Kelly is gonna continue, like we've talked about many times, with her work at Morehead State, which I support. It is great. So there's a point four position there. Um, we know that Roseanne's moving on to other opportunities, so there's some room there, so. It, we need, we're gonna need a full-time person, so I said, let's post it now, and that's what I'd like to do. Uh, it's a position that's basically kind of already there, so we don't need to add a position necessarily, um, with Roseanne leaving, Kelly's point four. So, we, we want to get that out tomorrow too. Uh, and post that and see what happens, and do we need more than that? I guess we won't know when this thing goes. We know we can add another one if there's another room if we need it. And it's only gonna be based on numbers, and the numbers we know is gonna support the staffing. As we've run those numbers and made some adjustments to the numbers, but uh, yeah. Exciting time, um, to serve more families and more kids, which has been our goal from the beginning, the beginning. So I also want to say, and obviously Tracy gave you a new handout here, and that, just all her work on it. And uh, the meetings that she's put into it with the paraprofessionals of early childhood, with the staff of early childhood. Wayne and Brittany are getting in that game now too, so we can make this one school. And uh, old preschools over there, and we're over here, we want us to be all together, so we can support and help kids and teachers. Yeah, it is an exciting time, and I guess the next two weeks, we're gonna learn a lot. I'm like, okay, uh, here we go, so.
I'm assuming you checked with already, but just.
Yep.
Does that, do those two times, like when it says eighteen, eleven, fifteen, noon to three, belong for their lunch and prep?
Yep, yep, they already have a schedule put together. Wayne and Brittany and Tracy worked through that with the teachers and that, so, yeah.
We probably fielded fifteen calls since it went out this afternoon.
I've already taken two also.
Yeah, so Tracy asked me today. I know we're gonna talk about it at the board meeting, but can I send a little heads up, just so people know that it's coming? I said, for sure, so. I'm sure, yeah, here comes the phone right now. Brittany, you're getting into it, so, yeah. It's uh, we're gonna learn a lot. It's like anytime you do something new, you hope and dream that you got it perfect. Um, we know it's not gonna be perfect, but we're gonna try everything we can to make sure we accommodate the families that need to get in. Just really child and daycare, so it's exciting, so. Um, the transportation contractor meeting was great. Uh, I brought donuts, and it'll be stones anymore, that's great. I also brought other stuff. I brought orange juice and other items, so it wasn't just, you know, donuts, but. Yeah, so do I, and it's, I shouldn't, but I do, and uh, it was great. It was good. So it was a very good meeting. I just wanted to thank them for the year. Uh, we talked about our early start, late start, cancel school. How did that go for them? Was my timing okay with informing them and going through that process of canceling and tours late, uh, it's done well. Um, we talked about our drop-off and pickup, the Dilworth site, they're just ecstatic, ecstatic is a big word. Uh, they're very happy about the change with the parents that are on the north end and out of the south end, so when they come through, they, they're petrified every day, if there's kids coming across the street. It's, it's not perfect for parents yet, uh, but the bus drivers are really happy with the open streets, if you will. They just feel safer, they feel, i- it's better for them. Over here, we talked a long time about reopening Park Avenue for them. And what door we can let them in instead. This is, this is not ideal. We had Metro Cog come to the Dilworth site last Thursday. I talked to Dan today. Uh, we, he asked for a meeting last week at school. I said, eh, maybe not. So we are gonna go early June. Uh, he's gonna send out something to our group, uh, to have a Metro Cog meeting about our transportation. And we're gonna have it right here in this room to talk about our pickup and drop-off, what they saw. And they're gonna drop a safe route to school for us, and I, I really, um. It'll be a very important meeting for us to have. Officer Vogel and the police and, and law enforcement in Dilworth as well to talk about what's this gonna look like long-term? I mean, we, we have, these are the lots, and these are the streets. Uh, they were drawn perfectly or not perfectly, depending on where you are. And we just need to figure out the safest way to get our kids in and out of the building, whether it's on Park Avenue or whatever street in Dilworth. We just need to make sure that we're doing this better, I think, and uh. Yeah, so we'll work through that, and it'll be in early June, and we'll, we'll have a plan for next fall, but it'll be like, it's safer. It's the same like that, okay? Um, insurance, it was just some insurance language that our new insurance uh, provider wanted to make sure was in our contract. It's not in the contract, but every one of our contractors already have those same limits. They feel, they said that they're mandated by uh, Department of Transportation, D O P, Minnesota D O T. And those all align exactly with what the insurance uh, provider said you need to have. So we're talking, should we have in the contract or not? They said, well, we can, but it's already required by them too, so. So that was a good conversation to start with negotiations. We talked at our next meeting, I was just gonna, we told you. And then we set updates and go from there. Okay, um, construction update, uh, Metro Cog just talked about that, um, during meeting. Other things, questions from you? Um, I should say this, um, tomorrow, after this meeting, I just need to discuss with you quick about our mediation with Mission McCann. That'll take place tomorrow. I'll be over at Kip's Law Office in the morning. So maybe some details on what that's about, so you. Questions from me?
Just reminder, tomorrow is the farm to school lunch, if anybody's available. I unfortunately couldn't move anymore, I always got friends, so if anybody's available, what time?
Well, uh, it says eleven thirty to one. I think the state is showing up at eleven forty-five, uh, and, you know, when they're done interviewing with D U I and K B L Y, and Keverly's Wellness Committee will probably be represented. Um, and so, of course, this mediation is happening, and it could be an hour, it could be all day. I talked to Kip about that in this event. I said, it would be important for me to be out here, but if I can't here because in the middle of something, I can't be out here, so. Total faith in the people out here to take care of it, so it'll be great event. We are very fortunate, and I think Kim said it earlier too, she's done a lot for our school, Shannon has, and you know that. And uh, yeah, this is just another way, I guess now we can finally showcase some of those things to the public of what's actually happening.
I'm looking forward to watching, and she said all channels are gonna be over here, or just K B L Y?
K B L Y, W D A Y, and the Fargo Forum.
So wonderful.
Those were all confirmed, but you said.
Any further questions? All right, let's move on to seven point one. This is the approval of our regular meeting from April twenty-fourth through a motion. Motion by Amy, is there a second? Second by David, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carries. Incentive agenda, claims and accounts bar.
Six hundred five thousand three hundred fifty-three dollars and ninety-three cents.
Also included is your monthly budget report. Um, we're approving the resignation of Betty Benson, speech pathologist. Effective the end of the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three school year. For the rec, resignation of Morgan Lasilla, special education teacher, effective the end of the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Prove the resignation of Mida Lomboria Food Service, effectively second, twenty-twenty-three. And approve the resignation of Keith Colwell, transportation coordinator, effective June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three. Do we have a motion? Uh, David, before you want a second, like? Any questions or discussion?
One thing I wanted to, to tell you about the budget, um, if you looked at that budget sheet, it's just, uh, just under seventy-one percent of the budget for the year. In April, it should be at seventy-five percent, so that's a good sign, as back to market today. And yes, there could be a couple green things coming from April still, but he said it's, there's not much left. So he said that percentage is pretty good. Just so you know, we talked about our budget and how we have to correct it and the fund balance from last year. That, that percentage right there has given us a surplus of seven hundred seventy-three thousand. Um, two hundred ninety-five of that is S R funds that we packed up, we're gonna slide it to fix that didn't happen last year. So I just wanted to give you an update on that. So we're just short of three hundred thousand of S R funds to make that slide. If you remember, back when we set our budget in December, we talked about, or January, sorry. Um, fighting about seven hundred thousand of those S R funds. And we're hoping maybe we don't have to, um, because we'll talk about the construction, to construction budget, you guys can see in there as well. Uh, I'm meeting, Marcus and I are meeting with Trevor and Marla from Mingo on Thursday morning for a couple hours. I, uh, I wanna make sure that when we finish this, I know how it's getting covered and we're not digging into any other pockets and we're getting to a place where I'm getting a little bit more nervous, so I wanna visit with them extensively. Uh, we have this meeting tomorrow. Uh, and then we're gonna go into other meetings with other contractors after that, as you know, when this thing is over. I don't know, I'm not a, I'm not the judge, so I don't get to come up with what the mediation numbers will be or whatever else happens, so. Just want you to know, we're, we're getting close to an end, and when the end is coming, I'm starting to see some things that popped up that I was unaware of. That Trevor brought to me too, what had was done before they even came on. And so, like I said, we're gonna meet again, and we're getting closer to that end, and it's, we're gonna be okay, I think. Just a lot of things that are sitting up there that that are unresolved, so, anyway, just wanted to make sure you guys knew that too. You have any questions?
Uh, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed? New and unfinished business, nine point one. This is our tentative class of the twenty-twenty-three, twenty, twenty-twenty-three D G F graduates. Do we have a motion? Motion by David, is there a second? Second, second by Laura. Any questions or discussion?
You know, I can't think of what the class sizes.
Is it like ninety? One oh two? Oh, I was gonna say ninety-two. Gosh, that's great, we got ten more kids. Wonderful. Yeah, there we are, perfect. Uh, we have a motion and a second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Nine point two, this is our policies. This is the first reading of the following policies. Four twenty-five, staff development. Four twenty-seven, workload limits for certain special education teachers. Five oh one, school weapons policy. Five oh three, student attendance. Five sixteen point five overdose medication. Five twenty-three, policies incorporated by reference. Six oh five, alternative educational services. We have a motion. So, motion by Amy, is there a second? Second by Nicole, any questions or discussion?
It is now. It's, we, we gotta deliver here just one month.
One at each site.
Is that accessible to the people during like, Dan conference and sporting events and?
Great question. I would say right now, no. Just because we just got it, we're trying to figure out what, how to make it accessible. It's a great question to call. It's something we just talked about, I don't, two months ago or whatever, I visited with the restaurant all and and talked and make sure. Yep, me too. So I said, we gotta have it, and uh, now, the thing, once we have it now, does Shannon give it? Yikes. You know, I mean, we gotta make sure we have proper training.
Yeah.
And uh, we have obviously somebody on staff that can do it, because we have an S R role to do it. That's just, what about those other times, right? Like at a concert, so what, what do we do? So, yeah, we need to dial that in, I'm sure. So thanks for asking, appreciate that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Uh, any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Nine point three, this is a certified contract for Suzanne Everson, business teacher, M A step thirty, M A plus thirty, step eighteen. To start, uh, according to twenty-three, twenty-four school year, is there a motion? Motion by Nicole, is there a second? Second by Laura, any questions or discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed. Nine point four, this is a certified contract for Scott Kittleson, tech ed teacher. M A plus thirty, step eighteen, effective the start of the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Do we have a motion? Motion by Amy. Oh, Micah, Micah, you got a second?
Sure.
Okay. Any questions or discussion?
Will he be a high school or the middle school?
Yes. Uh, I believe he's going to be mostly high school. They did talk about a little crossover. Um, I don't know if they dialed that in completely because they haven't. I sued you. Yeah, because we had to make an adjustment this year. It is going to be back in the middle school for sure. Yeah, and so exactly how that is, they're, they're, they want to meet with those two too. And if there's a class or two, then maybe they shift. So, yeah, we're very fortunate to find somebody. I did have a chance to visit with him when he came in and I didn't hug him. I just gave him. I just gave him a good handshake and said, we really appreciate you making this move. He's, anyway, we're just really happy. And same with Suzanne too, uh, Suzanne, sorry. Roger's really excited and how they can use her in the school. And we, I mean, we still are missing some components. You know, our fax is zero applicants to this situation. We know we can cross over a little bit there. Yeah, we just can't find that person, so.
Definitely filling a void, so. Yes, absolutely. All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed. Nine point five, non-certified contract for Ashley Schreiber, paraprofessional, effective sort of twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Do we have a motion? Someone, motion by Brittany, is there a second? Second by Micah, any questions or discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Milk beds, um, Julie Carey, do you approve the milk beds with Cas Clay for their F Y twenty-four? And is it not in here?
I didn't get anything from the manager.
When I met with her last week, she said it was, it wasn't even close. So, and both of those bits that they were the. I can't remember the numbers. I'm sorry, it's a weak. No change as far as the contract.
Oh, is there a second? Second by David, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Bread bid nine point seven, um, for the bread bread from panel gold, do we have a motion? Motion by David, is there a second? Second, second by Laura, any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. On nine point eight meal prices, um, this is to approve the meal prices for F Y twenty-four. You can see, um, when you look down. Uh, everything is free except if this must be just cost for visitors. Is that what we're?
Have to pay. And the other one, there is your extra entree. So students don't get seconds for free. There is a cost to that. They're still working out exactly because I've heard it's going to be a bit adult price is how the, how it reads. But, so what, what is an extra entree or what's an extra meal? And so is it a meal? Then it's an adult price. If it's an entree, it's this. So she's done some research and you can see that these are adjusted a little bit. Uh, where it says entree and it says adult lunch. Okay?
They have milk? Even if it's a free lunch, they're still paying for milk?
No, I think that's if you want an extra milk. Milk is a part of your meal.
Well, and it, but in like, uh, if you had a whole lunch during COVID or whatever, when they, you had to pay for milk, but you didn't have to. If you, if you got the whole lunch, like threw the rest of the lunch away and just drank the milk, that was free.
My understanding through this lunch program is if you bring your own lunch and you don't have a drink, I think you get the milk for free. I think you do. Um, there's about seventy-five frequently asked questions because everybody's asking and. I want to say that's how I read it, but um, obviously we'll make sure that how that is supposed to be, but that was my understanding. Essentially, we're just following the statute.
Yeah.
We are, we're following a universal meals. The free price, yeah. They do, it's the adult price. You're right. Um, yeah, and so, it, yeah, I had a few questions, so I know. I, uh, I talked to Shannon a lot about that because my interpretation, when I start reading through all those frequently asked questions, to me. No matter what they come back for in seconds, they're supposed to charge adult price. That's how it reads, in my opinion. Doesn't, I don't agree with it necessarily, but that's the way I read it. She reads it differently in that it's, that's if you gave them a whole meal again. Well, ninety percent of our kids aren't going to come back for the whole meal again. They're going to come back to the entree, like another cheeseburger, another chicken, you know, whatever. So that's why you see this, because this is a part of what she's getting to through that. So.
We do have a motion. Motion by David, uh, second Laura. Right, uh, any further questions? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Nine point nine, non-certified contract for Kelly Paulson. This will be food service, effective May eighth of twenty-three. Do we have a motion? Is there a second? Second by Micah, any questions or discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Great, next board meeting is Monday, May twenty-second, note five PM. So we moving it up a half an hour. Um, and then the budget committee will meet after that. So any other things? We were filling out the. That's going around there, down there. Okay, send that this way here.
And the next meeting is also in this.
In this room. Yeah, there's another concert that we need. So, okay, it is six twenty-six, meeting is adjourned.